...sell and how that will affect our tax rate, I don't know if that can be calculated. I do know that the mineral, that the oil production decreases and that's generally going to decrease the valuation of metal in time. So if this happens in five years or six years, we have to have money in savings to pay for it at that time to make up for what we're going to have to pay taxes. And we're not going to have the, the, the sales tax income coming in like we had this past year. We need to get all this infrastructure in and put in more pipelines and all the equipment. We will not have that amount of tax, sales tax income. So that will be less. But we can't just jump our tax rate to make up for it.
Do we have any idea if we're going to qualify for any of the USDA funding?
No.
No, that Beto was...
USDA, we just said we can't wait for USDA. We have to go ahead and bill the jail. We're, we're not counting on USDA funding. You can sell the bonds at the same price or lesser price than we can get USDA funding at this time. They guarantee it's three and 34 percent and now they're particularly selling the business for about three and a half percent.
One of the problems with USDA is that they, they require, I don't know why, they require you for about four years. So, you know, when, when you see instances where USDA gives a particularly good interest rate, it tends to be offset by the fact that you're going out four years. And, and an example like this, we wouldn't want, want, in my opinion, to stretch that out that long. We need to pay it off because we've got the current oil values to do so. And then, you know, on those same lines, it goes back to the question you asked, that you asked earlier about what happens. If we were to do this jail project on a 10-year finance and put it out there with a seven or eight-year call feature and the values would fall, another thing we could do is refinance it at that time and, and extend the debt back to something that would have normally been done. Normally, the state jails go out 20 years, this old L.A.S.T. county took their debt out 21 years. Lansing County went out 21 years. So if, you know, that's another pressure relief valve, if you will, that the oil values fall and we've got this debt out short, we can refinance it and extend it because it's a lessening impact here on state residents taxpayers.
Something else that's going to have to be decided by the court, knowing that the historical commission has limited funding for this next biennium, how is the court going to proceed with the courthouse? Are we going to spend two, three, four, five million dollars to go ahead and finish the project? Are we going, you know, that'll come out of our fund balance.
We can't mess with it if it's okay with the store.
Yeah, no, but as long as we follow our master plan, they won't argue if we pay for it all ourselves.
Is that the way to know now?
We're going to have a bridge facility with a site as well as buildings. We, Lorraine gave a presentation the other day of 1.2 million for an EMS facility. You know, if you add those together plus an elevator at 200 East Calvert and put five million in for the courthouse restoration, you're looking at $16 million out of a $17 million unrestricted fund balance. We're going to be doing a lot of capital improvements out of fund balance in this next year. And I know when Bob and I were corresponding back and forth, his thoughts as well as mine are, finance the big one and you pay for the smaller ones out of your cash.
Well, I say, I talked to three, four financial institutions of personnel this past week, probably five or six county treasurers and other counties around the state. General consensus is that interest rates aren't going to stay this low. We're going to sell bonds, we sell them now, get them at a low interest rate. And I did find financial institutions who said we can get a guaranteed FPIC or SEC secured investment in a range of five to six million dollars in that, that amount. We can get that, five to six million dollars for five years and we can get 2% interest on that. So we're talking about maybe a one and a half percent interest difference on what we have invested and what we're collecting and what we're paying. So we need some security and we need to invest something and have it set aside. And even if we get only 2%, that's a whole lot better than 0.13 or whatever it is that pay on the tax pool or the tax star or whatever those fully liquid accounts are that we can get overnight. So we have a lot of things to consider here. But I, my feeling is that we should sell some bonds and have some bonded debt in this to help keep our tax rate up and have some security. That's money away. So you're talking about selling the whole seven million? I mean, I'm in a jail, I'm in a jail, so I'm just talking. And as Bob said, later on, we refinance.
I see what Bob's saying. I used to want to be where we are in the same place. We had all the show on, you know, we had everything else and, I mean, we always, I mean, not show, excuse me, uranium. We had, we had a lot of profits because we was counting, saved a lot of money in local rent, I don't know what happened. So as long as we have some type of plan, we're going to pay for this smaller one or do some of the larger ones or do something, but why all this oil bill money see or it's time to make our improvements? I just don't want to burden somebody 30 years down the road.
I don't think we should do 30 years. That's one thing, when I sent Bob this email, he, he responded, you know, like I said, I asked him how to reconstruct capital out like growth without occurring future debt, because I didn't want to, and I liked his, his comment was, what's your definition of future? Is it when the oil boom is over? Is it next year, 10 years from now? If that's the verb or push the ball, I would say this, let's issue debt today, we can, we can at low interest rate and send the bill for 85% of that debt to all kinds of accumulated cash that we all going in, so paper here. You know, and, and that was to me, you know, I like, one thing that struck out with me right there, oh, we can, you know, at low interest rates, well, we can accumulate, let's issue debt today, but we can accumulate at a low interest rate. That one sentence there stuck, stuck with me a lot. I, I know that we can't, we can't pick a, we can pick a year, but you can't, you don't know where it's going to go. I haven't, I, I, you know, maybe I'm off track, but I kind of questioned, what happens if the tax rate does go to zero? What happens?
It can't let it go to zero because, because Tom Rain County is a good example, but you let that, that tax rate go too low, certainly it'll go to zero, you're going to find yourself in a position where you're going to have limitations on how fast you can raise it, 8%. And if you go over that, it's going to be subject to rollback, it's going to be subject to rollback by voters who are seeing the economy go down around them, which means they're going to have a negative output when they go to the polls. So you've got to the extent that you can, you know, protect the tax rate. And I think that, you know, it's, it's, if I'm over in Kirk County, another one of our clients, where we got literally 60% of their tax base is subject to the over 65 freeze. So when they lose a little bit of the tax rate, they've lost forever because of the over 65 freeze. You've got to be able to balance between giving the taxpayers, allowing them to participate in the boom that Horns County is experiencing right now. I think they have, you know, they've gone, they've seen the tax rate go from 80 cents to, to less than 30 cents, so they have. But at some, at some point, you've got to start protecting the tax rate, not because you're trying to take advantage of any of the taxpayers, but if you're being good stewards of the financial flexibility of future courts. And one other question, this 8% that you can increase it when that time comes, does that mean 8% of what your taxes were last year? Or is that if you had 13%, then it'd be 21% the next year? Can you answer that, Brenda?
You can only increase your tax rate by 8%.
8% without the rollback. You can increase it more than that, what 8% you do is subject to rollback. I'm asking, what is 8%? Is it if you have 13% tax rate, it can be 21% the next year?
No.
Okay, so 8% of the taxes you...
Yeah, 8%, yes.
All right. So near capital, near as fast as it came back.
No, no.
All right.
Take years to recover it.
So y'all do understand what situation we could be in, some bad rates are coming.
Exactly, that's why I asked. Well, Bob, I got to say, I would really thank you for that.
Well, as, as those of, as those among you who know me better, I'm not afraid to talk or respond. I try to be helpful, Commissioner.
Yeah, I guess this time puts us in a 13 bond, discussion possible action in regard to previous decisions, request law finish to sell 8 million dollars in bonds, 7 million for the jail, 1 million for roads. So we're going to go ahead and like sell those based on what you're saying to the tax rate that we need to do.
My, my recommendation, particularly after learning about the tax base of government getting to 6 billion and what you can do, sell all 8 million. And I'm inclined to, to sell it over a shorter period of time than I was three hours ago.
So you're looking at 10 years?
I'm looking at 10 or 12 years. I think, you know, you're the chief administrative officer of the county, we ought to discuss it in a little more detail, but, but I would, I would recommend less than 10 years.
I just don't want to drag you down the road.
No, I'm, I'm thinking, my current thinking is 10 years. I hate to see it go any shorter than that, for the reasons I expressed, Commissioner Bob.
If we say 12 years, but we can do the 10, we can pay off the 10 to the level of ceiling.
Oh, absolutely. No, I, I think if we did, if we did it 12 years, I could, I think, I'm comfortable I could arrange it to be paid off at 8 because that's what we're still wanting.
And that's completely...
So, or we pay them off.
And that's just optional, we don't have to.
That's right, it should be an accounting option.
Somebody just said they know what you're selling.
Yeah. So you want to, you want to sell the million for the road studio, I'm comfortable with that. For that one, I think we need for that one for the road that we took out. We need to sell road box, if you're taking it from that, we need to sell that.
Yes. So what we need to do here then, it says, we've already made the decision to sell 8 million dollars last year about it, so we don't have to take any action because the decision's already made to sell it.
And what will happen as a matter of procedure is that we put together a primary official offering document, which the Commissioner happens to have on here, this is just a draft form. Once we've gotten this completed, then we'll submit it with five years of audits and a budget to, to a standard course for a, for a rating. Then we'll get a rating and we'll then take the bonds into the marketplace. One decision that needs to be made yet is who the underwriter or underwriters would be on the transaction. Does anybody have any questions about the negotiated method of sale and what the role of the underwriter is and how can you answer that? What we're going to be doing, what we need to do is name at least one, probably two underwriters. The job of those underwriters will be to purchase the 8 million dollars in bulk, at a fixed rate, they will break them into $5,000 denominations and then go out and retail sell them to, to individual investors. The court or the judge can make a recommendation or make a decision as to who they would like to do and have to fill that role. I gave a long, it took me an hour, and I said, I don't know if y'all will be going that much detail, but with the county auditor over in Wilson County, we're actually coincidentally selling 8 million dollars worth of debt over there as well for their courthouse restoration and law enforcement. They ultimately decided on two firms. I explained to them that they're the big firms like the Merrill Lynch's of the world and J.K. Morgan Chase and C.B. Bank and so forth. There were Goldman Sachs, those are the names you all think about here when discussing this. However, I don't believe in a big national firm being in the best interest of the county because frankly, giving an 8 million dollars is a pretty small transaction for those guys. Their customers are doing $3 billion state of California transactions and $1.5 billion city of New York transaction. The next group, next tier of underwriters would be what we call super regional firms. Used to be the old A.G. Edwards firm, now which merged with the one you've probably heard of, Morton Keegan, which is a firm out of Memphis. Probably Morton Keegan is the only super regional operator in this part of the country that, that's still in business as an independent firm, most of them have merged. And then there are the regional firms, purely regional firms that have historically operated in Texas, there's firms like First Southwest Company, Southwest Securities, Sanco Capital Markets, are firms that are all headquartered in Texas, in fact, are all, we haven't had to go to Dallas. I think any one of those three firms would be good firms, or any two of those three firms would be good firms, work with the county, just by point of personal disclosure. I used to work for First Southwest Company, I worked for them for nine years, now they're with my current firm for 21 years. No animosity, I'm neither recommending for them or against them, I'm just letting you know that they're a good firm, I think they can do a good job, but I do have any connection with them. I am not aware of any firm that has proactively contacted the county, if you had any firms contacted here. So I can provide additional information to the judge about those three firms and about other firms. There are going to be minority firms out there, there are going to be smaller regional firms like Coastal Securities out of Houston that, that you may want to consider. Maybe I'll just provide additional information to the judge, however the court wants to handle it.
We begin underwriter will probably get back on the business a little bit.
Okay. All right.
Everybody agree with all of this?
Okay, we'll provide some information to the judge when he comes back for an interview. Once the underwriters have been selected, the ratings have been, have been established with standard course, we will put it out, that is what we call an order period, and we'll come back to the court for official approval. The action today or the action last month is not sufficient to authorize issuance of the debt, there's going to be a formal bond order, that's going to name who we're selling the bonds to, name the specific interest rates and terms and materials, all the specific deals, that'll come back to the court for final approval. Once that's done, we send it to the Attorney General's office for their approval. From today, you ought to have money in the bank in possibly as short as 75 days, certainly, I mean, possibly as short as 45 days, certainly no longer than 60 days, I think, I'm running in your mind.
And these cost, if you estimate, did you generate them?
He did.
I did. Have you answered any questions you might have?
No, I just, they're, they're pretty, pretty correct.
Yeah, I've done this with 7 million, so it's going to be slightly more than that because it's an 18-year dollar transaction, very representative, it won't be much different.
Do you have more?
We don't need, we've already decided to sell 8 million.
We've already decided to sell. That's already been made.
I need to designate you as a representative of the county.
I'll bring the underwriter back to court. Let's bring the underwriter back to court. Let's go to number 14, and that's just discussion guidance, possible action from law commissioners regarding investment county funds. And she and I are talking about different investments, different opportunities, different things out there.
I would, I would make a couple of comments, Judge. First of all, in the interest of disclosure, I am not an investment advisor. However, so I'm not going to make any specific recommendations. However, I do think it's important that you have some broader guidelines as to what, what you can do. We all know that you've got the Texas Public Funds Investment Act, which gives very specifically what the alternatives are available to the county. Obviously, we've got a situation here where your depository bank is paying you notably above market rates for their interest rates and for their deposits, and consequently they would like to reduce some of their exposure with respect to that. I doubt they'd make the money off the county if it was a bank. So the alternatives outside your depository bank, including the money market pool funds that the Commissioner's already mentioned, those are highly liquid, you could pull the money out immediately, just like you put a checkbook, because it's so short term in nature, you're not going to have a very modest investment return. There are other vehicles, including some longer term, government insured or otherwise collateralized CDs from banks. I think the question that you'd have to ask yourself there is how long do you want to go out? You've got uncharted reserve funds currently in the neighborhood of $17 to $8, you milk from your budget, you don't need to model that. You had mentioned, Commissioner, four, five, eight, going out longer than that, and I think that's probably, you know, a good safe number to put in a longer term investment. But I do think we have to just think intellectually about, you know, where is interest rates going to go and how much do you want to tie it up for how long? And what I think ultimately has got to be a rising interest rate environment, we're very low interest rates now. You know that the Federal Reserve is, is looking to reduce what we call QE2, quantitative easing 2, which is a fancy word for federal government in terms of trying to manage the interest rates, are buying bonds in the secondary market in the tune of $8 billion a month to try to artificially keep interest rates low with the expectation that that will stimulate the economy. Federal Reserve Chairman, Mr. Banock, has suggested more than once that that program may come to an end as soon as the end of 2013. But when that happens, I think interest rates will start to rise. And so I, I think we want to be careful that we don't have too much money for too long because we may find that in as little as six months to nine months, we might be able to get substantially higher interest rates than we, we locked them up now. So those are some general things. I think just on a, further down your agenda, it got discussed, maybe Bob Ross, possibly as a county broker agent, I said, I mean, just puts him on the list of qualified brokers. I'm sure that we're getting, you know, advice and suggestions from a number of different broker dealers, and just need to think about from a cash funds management perspective, how much money to tie it for how long. I can work with, with the judge and whoever else is so appointed by the court to examine those things.
Technically, I'm the only investment officer of the county.
I'm sorry?
Technically, I'm the only investment officer of the county, yes, we don't have an investment...
Committee?
Committee, no.
You probably ought to get one in line of the Public Funds Investment Act, you need a name, what is the name of the investment committee?
Well, our investment policy specifically says the county treasurer's investment officer, and that's the way it's always been until we recently, in fact, I'm the one that brought it up, we're getting a committee together because you're fixing the 8 million dollars into my bank, our depository that we have right now, which our contract ends August 1st, and they're screaming at us to get that money out, so...
I think it's probably, I mean, some, I probably ought to examine the county investment policy as opposed to, you know, in conjunction with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act to make sure that the local policies are in compliance with the state law.
We've got some changes on there.
I think the state policy requires a committee.
Well, we should be on that committee.
Well, that's up to the, that's up to the court. I think that, I will tell you, it doesn't even have to be local people. For many years, I was on the Victoria County committee, and that committee is typically made up of the county judge, county auditor, county treasurer, and they also had a local commercial banker that was on the committee, and then I was the guy that lived in San Antonio, I was on the committee, so we had five people on that committee, three county people and then two private sector. Ultimately, that's a decision for the court. You know, I, I represent cities and schools as well, and often what we'll see is a finance committee on city council where you may have one elected official that has a particular expertise in finance, because of their professional background, they will end up on those committees. Have you answered any other questions, Ms.?
So if we formed a committee like that, would we be interested in something like that, if we...
I would be willing to serve on your investment committee. Obviously, I'm not a broker, I'm sorry, I would not be exercising any, you know, not in a position where I'd be making broker's fees or anything like that, particularly as a, as a service to the county to help you go over your investment plans or review your performance and that sort of thing. But if that would be the desire of the court, I'd be happy to do that. I do it for, I do it for other clients. None is because of Orange County.
Because you're, obviously, you're saying that to be in compliance with laws and regulations, we need that committee.
My understanding of the Texas Public Funds Investment Act is that you're on the investment committee. And that does not mean that everybody is registered to investment. There's supposed to be a committee, is my understanding of the act. Is that consistent with your understanding of the act?
Yes. I'm trying, I've got the PFI right here, I'm looking to see if, we have to have a committee if we just have an officer, because I know Charles Jones with Bell County is the only investment officer that they have, he does not have a committee. We're looking to that, I mean, we have, that's what we have, but I really didn't think we had to have a committee.
I think it was probably, just in my personal opinion, I think it's probably good to have a second, you know, certified or registered investment officer, because what happens if, if our treasurer's out of town, you know, for a two-week vacation and something extraordinary happens? You know, so I think probably just from a management perspective, probably a good idea to have two investment officers, and then again, I, I do not believe that everybody on the committee has to be an investment officer. Certainly, you would not want, in my opinion, me or someone else who's not a county official to be an investment officer of the county, you just want somebody to help over, see and provide input and stuff.
And that entails training, it doesn't mean, maybe someone of the other investment officers, there is training.
I think it would be wise to have a investment committee. You could invest $5 million or something.
I think about it, next session.
Yes. Is that a consistent five people? It's up to the court. I was just giving an example of what Victoria County has done. That's just an example. I would say probably ought to have at least, my, my guess would be three to five, but that's just my personal opinion.
Five, is our investment policy coincide with 2256.005?
The PFI, yes.
So it addresses all these, all the policies must address all that?
Yes. The only thing that connects on the agenda to change the collateralization to 250,000 and to, right now, the only investments we have are just like the tax pool and with CDs, that's the only thing we authorize on investments right now, that's why I changed that.
So we'll do that for the next one? I'm going to have anyone else? Anybody else have any more questions to Bob before he's down?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is discussion possible, this is number 15, discussion possible action in regard to rental investment agencies to assist in investing county funds.
As a state law, I've talked to several people last week, and the two of our local stock investment agencies, Steve Ju with Mayor Price, Al Lissy with Amber Jones, and they both told me that they could get 2% on the law, like a $5 million investment provided, some of the background, that I could have exactly what we wanted. And there's one in Austin, who I didn't talk to, I talked to the system, but didn't talk to them, and he has something similar. So there are always, we can get more than just the 3% that you get in overnight investments, completely liquidated, bought out of the day. As I stated, I think that it'd be wise to have some money in savings, add it somewhere, make it some money to know what I've been using for a few years, but also, Bob also talked, we don't want to put too much in there because interest rates are expected to go up, I don't know when they're going to, they've been mostly long-term, but they will be going I think any one of you is authorized to go out and...
I think any one of you is authorized to go out and find out whatever misinformation you can about investment. If you want to put someone out there, set some aside, and see what we have, what options we have. So if I don't, you can go and call whoever you like to see what options are out there.
Well, I think wherever we collect, we need to be very careful that we have somebody that's dealing with, that knows how to deal with government, law, and also is, there's large amounts of money, such as the. That's my feeling. But I'm sure that whoever, Guy or Bob or even people that you have, or probably getting more information is, who can, who can deal with that? I know that Southwest, that's what they call, they used to do a lot of stuff in the Canadian schools, I believe.
Southwest Security gives, the financial advisor. They do the same thing that I do, well, for the Canadian schools. But they have an investment brokerage group, the same with the legal. But I know that that buyer is bringing back to revise investment policy to point out what you need to do to be compliant with the rules is that you have brokers that are pretty clear and added to your listed rules, I mean, to your list of approved brokers. And then you make a decision. You want to put out three million for five years, or four million for two years, whatever it is. And then you go out and get at least three bids so that, you know, you're not playing favors with one broker. You decide what term it is, or what type of security it is that you're interested in investing in. And then let these multiple brokers bid against each other for those.
And they recommend to have two or three brokers to do exactly that. And one thing that we do have to do, and I missed it, I'm sorry, I'll have to bring it back, is we have to set the amount of time that we can invest in any one instrument, two years, five years. They tell us two to three years because of the interest rate. I mean, it could be, it could go up and you've got the money tied up for five years and you're losing money because of the interest rate. I mean, it's so unpredictable. Because when I first started here in 2007, we were getting 5.35% interest on R CDs. And I had brokers call me and I'd tell them, oh, how did I stay clicked? And they couldn't offer that. So it's good to have two free brokers as long as, like, Mr. Anderson said, they're, they can, they're allowed to invest in public funds. And that's the biggest thing, they have to be qualified to do that. So I don't know if Steve Ju, I mean, we're not selling, we can't buy stocks.
No, those guys are not putting ladder collateralized CDs.
Right, right.
All these that I've talked to, they said they won't cost you any fees. You put your dollars in there, those dollars are invested. The payment to us comes from who's being invested. So no ones. You put your money in there, it's secure for that amount. Their insured accounts, their S E C secured, FDIC or F I C A are secured somehow. They're all protected, they're all secured. So everyone are healthy.
But some of them too, I can't get, if I need money today, I can't get, if they're the F I C A accounts, I, there's only certain days that I can do that. When you get money market mutual funds, I can do that on a daily basis. So you have to figure out what money you don't want in the long term and put that out long term and tied up, something that you need daily. And another thing is, you know, with our tax dollars that we collect and our sales tax that we collect, I mean, instantly, as soon as I get that in the bank, it's going to have to be gone. So I'm not going to be able to call investment committee meetings every day because I've got to get rid of that money. I mean, that's something we're going to have to decide that, yes, when we get that eight hundred thousand dollars tomorrow for your county sales tax, which usually comes around the 10th of the month, this is where we're putting it. And when she starts paying taxes in a couple of months, you know, it's the same thing. But you want to bring some names back next, next time, Pete, her broker agents, put them on the agenda so we can approve them for our list, and then that's fine. But we have to have them on the list and they have to be approved.
Fine, we can squeeze one of those committee things in there, we'll get that in there.
Well, we have a meeting next week, whatever, so we can put that in there. The former committee and then put that timeframe, how long to put investments out to, we can do that. And then Pete can bring some names. Well, one always helps me in one part of the journey.
I've got a group, gosh, the Public Funds Management Group within our firm. They have a hell of a lives on investment policies. We just did that for the county. I'm not sure that we get a renewed, hopefully, as quickly as we can with. But you guys can certainly, in terms of approved brokers and creating investment committees, you should do all that, and if you want a complete review of investment policy from the T P I A or Texas Public Funds Management, I can't do the short. Then we can probably, that's our time to do that.
Okay. So Pete, you have some brokers that you want to put on the list, just if one of us, three brokers, is that what you can ask about, is that what you're saying?
Okay. I'm sorry?
We'll bring those brokers back.
Okay, yes. And like I said, we can have, you can have one in one broker and they recommend that you have one in one.
So let's go to number 16. It's discuss an act of setting hours for part-time employees effective October 1st, why?
As we've just talked about this several times, it's because of the Health Reform Act. Come January 1st, between January 1st and any timeframe, three months, six months, nine months, whatever we, timeframe we pick, if you work 30 hours or more, we have to pay health insurance. So we need to, y'all need to decide which way you want to do it, part-time.
As of, I don't think I've seen it off the list with some of the human services people for the counties. A lot of them are just saying, hey, we're going to wait and see what happens.
I mean, it doesn't mean, I don't care, but we definitely don't need to be aware of that.
Some have, are even taking their part-time people to 25 hours.
Get below the 30.
Stay below the 30 so they can find out what's going on.
Well, but the court needs to make that designation, not only for budget purposes, but for part-time wages. But also, if we're going to have 30 hours or more, then they're going to qualify for health insurance. So that needs to be reached and also.
Also, some, I got this one off the list, too. They did redefine the way they, they employ status. A regular, they have regular full-time, then their definition of regular part-time is a part-time employee shall be an employee in a position which is at normal work schedule, less than 29 hours per week, and fit his budget for at least one year. These employees are not eligible for county benefits, may be eligible for, but may be eligible for retirement benefits. And there's modified part-time. A part-time employee shall be any employee in a position which is a normal schedule, less than 40 hours per week, but more than 29 hours per week. And his budget at least for one year, including health benefits, may be eligible for retirement benefits. And temporary employees hired to a position which is expected to last some specific duration, not to exceed six months. And it is just one of the, one of the counties that I pulled this off of. But a lot of the counties that I came, I came across that I've researched have, have said that they're, really, you know, it says like a bad tube, you just going to, you've got to pull it. So the question, you have to decide, if I was saying, I can say 29 hours or 25 hours, and we're going to have to go from that just for budgeting purposes at this time.
But I have a question. When is the Health Care Reform Act, what is the actual start date on it?
2015.
That gives us a whole budget year that we still have.
Yeah, but you have to look that period.
The lookback period is going to be January 1st, 2014 to whatever, it's be three, six, nine, or 12 months, whichever way they, the county decides that that period is going to be. So we have to, by January 1st, we can't wait until January 15th to do that. And then you're looking back at January 1st, 2014 to look at it.
And one of the, let me share an email I've got with, this is from a Harrison County. But this is, they spoke with some of the larger cities that already made decisions to limit all part-time employees to no more than 20 hours, no matter where they work, what they do, or who they work for. For them, this makes sense due to the large number of employees. But for most counties, I think it may be an overkill. And there's an article here, it says, like, example, deputy constables are scheduled to work 32 hours and no more. They have no benefits, paid benefits, nor do they have clerical employees throughout the county structure. They range from 20 hours to 32 hours per week. Since now the part-timers have benefits, now we won't be taking away from them something they don't already have. But it would reduce their paychecks. It would lower the cutoff something like 28, 24, 25, or 20 hours, depending on what you, what kind of job you want to get in.
And that, and too, that's, you know, people who've been working 32 hours a week or 35 hours a week, if you cut them back, you may lose them because they need that money. It's just a decision that the commissioners need to be aware of.
But if you have, another question I have, if you have, if we decide to say, all right, if you work 29 or 30 hours, you're full-time, right?
That would basically, you're.
So why would you want to work a 40 hour week?
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, no, but I'm asking, it's something that you got to, I'm asking. Because that's something you'd have to, to look at.
Look at those other four sitting at the table, don't ask me.
Well, that's why you wouldn't, you're going to have to specify part-timers. This is what they're budgeted for, and they cannot deviate from that.
Exactly.
We've got some part-time positions that go over what they're budgeted, and then we have to worry about scrambling later to recover it.
But that's, that's my whole point about.
When you make part-timers less than that cutoff period. And it has to be by court action.
Again, with, like with the sheriff's office, their dispatchers, and some of your jailers are all part-time. Some of them, yeah. So that's another issue that's going to create a scheduling conflict for a lot of departments.
Or you just get rid of the part-time positions and everybody's.
I was going to ask, how many part-timers do we have?
She's got more.
Eleven?
How many part-time positions are in the sheriff's department budgeted for?
How many, my count is four.
Probably less than 15, maybe?
I thought you said that, like, 11, 13?
Ten or 11, yeah.
But that may not have all, what's much, does that make it all?
Because you have, like, Sean Flores, who's been with J P Ford forever, she's 32 hours a week. No.
16.
Thirty-two a pay period.
Thirty-two a pay period. So, you know, she's been, she only has retirement. Our retirement system, I forgot, everybody that's worked for the county has to draw a term. That's part of our retirement form. So it's just basically, it's your medical insurance, what you're looking at.
Do you have to make it a decision?
No, but it's something that y'all need to make.
Yeah, it's got to be on the red article.
Before, before y'all can start working on salaries and budgets. So, maybe you can. What about that?
I guess if we, if we leave it as is, they just qualify for insurance if they're working 30 or more hours.
Correct. And then when the one, you start working on the budget, well, one can just, well, actually, it's going to be the 2014, 15 budget because she's going to put the insurance in there. So it's not really a.
But then if you have someone working 30 hours, 32 hours a week, and they qualify for the benefits, then why wouldn't you go ahead and make them a full-time employee and get the work, extra work out of them because they are getting the benefits?
On our part-time people, do we have anybody that just works like 20 hours and 15 hours? Are they all working at that 32?
No, we're not. Like, Sean Flores works 16 per week. Donna Ermas works what for J P?
Yeah, she's like 16 and 12, or whatever, something like that.
But earlier during the budget workshop, the judge said, tell, wants to put her all full-time.
Right, or wants to make the position full-time. Whether she wants it or not, there you go. Well, and then like we have Alex as the V S O. We have the hot check clerk in the county attorney's office. We have a part-timer in the tax office. We have part-timers, seasonal part-timers in the clerk's office. But before they were seasonal, they were year-round part-timers. But once those were moved on, our sheriff's department are part-timers.
We have probably this clean part-time.
There's several positions that are out in the part-time. L A P C or E M C coordinator.
That's a.
So whenever you already, I mean, you already did it, so I just wanted to make sure.
Number 17 is discuss that any bond laws and funds management group as county brokerage.
Yes, she's someone that the local presidents have used in, DeWitt County has used it for more years and more years. And then that better was in there, and I would just like to add it to the list.
Got that?
I'll call it, some of its references, it's highly recommended, the public bond laws.
And it's just adding him to the list, just not making him exclusive.
Right, right. Just come August 1st, I've got to do something with that money because all my CDs are due July 31st. Come August 1st, I've got to start moving that money.
Okay.
And this is a starting point.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Number 18, why, ready? Discuss acts updating investment policy. Number one, collateralization from 100,000 to 250,000. Number two, to include money market mutual funds according to section 2256014 of the Public Funds Investment Act. Number three, to include federal insured cash account according to section 2256009. Both as part of section A authorized investments discussed at signing resolution updating county investment policy. Why, did you bring one?
Yes, I did. Of course I did. It's basically, quotes of the money market mutual fund and the public cash account were, those were the sections that Bob Ross said we could qualify for on there. And we did the investment policy the last time, the 250,000 dollars was a temporary. It wasn't set, and then they said it took us full-time, around 200,000 dollars. So we need to change that.
Okay, this is what it says. For I buy a loan, investment officer Karnes County, whereas county investment policy completed for local property code 6256006B, where his investment policy has been reviewed by outside auditors. Whereas this information was brought forth through the court of Karnes County, approved by resolution, therefore, I buy a loan, investment officer Karnes County requests this resolution passed by the committee of courts of Karnes County. You have your 225056. Why, do you want to put your 225059 in here? Do you want to add it?
Probably. That was just what we did the last.
Why don't you redo your policy? Y'all can do some things executed after the, after, by adder 225059.
Okay.
And then, that way you'll have a bond, just we'll sign it later, but it's tomorrow, I mean, whenever you get rid of it. But, so that's the only change we can make to this resolution is to add the 2256009.
Make a motion to tie down allowing the county to.
Enter. All in favor, say aye. Number 19 is acknowledgement of a letter to the city of Nevada, in the county of Karnes, requesting Karnes County buy and bar some of the false allegations made in the comments in the bar. We're going to, and now, Special Counsel of Karnes County. This letter is not written at the expense of Karnes County.
Why are we even having this discussion?
Letter because we got accused of paying for it, and we're not paying for this stuff.
We get accused of paying for it?
We're not paying for this, none of this has anything to do with us.
Well, this is only a God, the, the, the.
That's it. This is not us, this is not between us. And that's the letter, we did not have it written, we did not approve payment for it, we didn't.
I guess if it's my comment, I mean, this, if it's not between us, why is it even on here?
We got accused of paying for it. We're not paying for this.
That's more personal, ma'am.
That's fine, but we're not going to, we're not going to say that, you know, we're paying for that. We're not paying for that.
I'd be there and drop it.
Number 20 is payment of bills.
We don't pay bills today, we pay our own checks.
You know what, you don't. Okay, number 21 is adjourned. I second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries 5-0.